So we're good to go. This public hearing held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called to order. It's being held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulations. Notice that this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held, is offered via video teleconference. This hearing is being recorded. We will first have a statement by Director Hamilton.
Good morning, everyone. Briefly, the district thanks the board for hosting this morning's public hearing on the district's proposed renewal of Bakelite Synthetics operating permit. The board does not vote on this action. The final decision will be made by the district. Final decision of both of the board when those are appropriate, and the district may be appealed according to APCD Regulation 1.0. So with that, thank you so much for helping.
Thank you. If you'd like to make a comment here in person, please fill out a speaker card. Do we have those in here if need be? Lanning will have those if you would like to make a comment. Instructions on making oral statements via video teleconference have been included as part of the materials posted on the district's website for this public hearing. As a brief reminder, please raise your hand via video teleconference or by clicking the raise hand button next to your name in a participants list or by pressing star three if you're joining by phone and will be called on. All statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. All statements will become part of the hearing record. You will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. This hearing is being held for the renewal of Title V Operating Permit for Bakelite Synthetics located at 6200 Camp Brown Road. The purpose of this hearing today is to collect written and oral statements for the district's consideration before making a final determination on the Title V Operating Permit for Bakelite Synthetics. After this hearing, if you provided an email address at signing, you will be notified by email of the district's permit decision and the availability of the district's comment and response document, which describes any changes to the permit from the draft to the final versions. It contains written responses to the questions that come raised at the hearing and provided within the comment period. This document will also be posted on the district's website under proposed actions and available upon request. All public hearings are conducted in an orderly manner, and we ask your assistance in ensuring that all comments are clearly heard and everyone present has the opportunity to present their comments. The proceedings today are being recorded in accordance with District Regulation 2.07. Matt King will provide a brief description of the district's permitting program. Mr. King.
Thank you, Chairman Sullivan. My name is Matt King, and I'm the Industrial Permitting Manager here at the district. Just for my sake, because I often mess up, are we recording? Are we great? I was not doubting. I was just making sure. Again, I'm the permit manager here at the district. I'm going to briefly describe today about the district's permitting program and how public comments are considered in making final permit decisions. The Bakelite facility is a Title V source. Title V permits for certain sources, including all potential major sources, are required under Title V of the Clean Air Act Amendments of 1990. The Title V permit brings together all of the applicable federal and local air requirements for the entire plant into one permit. US EPA has given the district authority to implement the Title V permit program as described in APCD Regulation 2.16. Public notice and an opportunity for hearing are required for operating permits at Title V sources. The permit contains all monitoring, record keeping, and reporting requirements in addition to all applicable standards. The district is required to consider public comments as part of our permitting decisions. Comments from the public that can be incorporated into the permit decisions are welcome. Relevant comments may include specific statements. One, about the permit application and the proposed permit or information indicating the operation of the facility poses a threat to human health or the environment. Two, that raises issues with the district's review process or procedure. Or three, express concerns that issuance of the permit would cause violations of the district's regulations or the Clean Air Act. Issues that are beyond the scope of the district's permitting authority, such as property values or zoning issues, or issues that are responsibility of other governmental bodies, not the district, are not considered in making final permit decisions. After the hearing and public comment period are complete, the district will review all comments. The district may make changes to the draft permit. Once a final determination is made, the permit and response to comments will be posted on the district's recent action page and sent to anyone who comments and provides contact information. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King. Cameron Barnett will provide a brief description of the proposed Title V five permit for Bakelite Synthetics. Mr. Barnett.
Good morning. My name is Cameron Barnett, and I am the Industrial Permitting Engineer here at the district. I'll provide a brief overview of the Title V operating permit for Bakelite Synthetics. Bakelite is a formaldehyde and phenolic residence manufacturer located on Camp Brown Road. They primarily emit volatile organic compounds to VOCs, organic hazardous air pollutants, or HAPS, and particulate matter. The permit limits the source to 100 tons per year of carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, particulate matter, and sulfur dioxide, 70 tons per year of VOCs, 25 tons per year of total combined HAPS, and 10 tons per year of each individual HAP. Agreed Board Order 2142 issued in 2001 requires Bakelite to comply with the requirements for existing sources, the National Emission Standards for Hazardous Air Pollutants from the Synthetic Organic Chemical Manufacturing Industry, commonly referred to as the Hazardous Organic Nicheap or the HAN. The facility is also subject to the district's Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program or STAR. Bakelite is currently operating under a 2014 Title V operating permit. The proposed renewal permit incorporates construction permits that were issued in 2015, 2016, 2020, and 2022, and updates the test results and control efficiencies of Bakelite's control devices based on the results of more recent statistics. The proposed permit also updates the future fire testing schedule for Bakelite. The proposed permit updates requirements for toxic air contaminants based on the most recent environmental acceptability demonstrations submitted to the district on August 31, 2018 required by STAR. Equipment information is also updated in this permit, and equipment that has been removed from the facility has been removed from the permit. Finally, the proposed permit clarifies and adds to monitoring, record keeping, and reporting conditions needed to demonstrate compliance with standards as compared to the 2014 version. These updates reduce potential sources of confusion and make it easier for the district to verify compliance. The district opened a 60-day public comment period on this permit on May 17, 2025, and subsequently extended it until today, August 20. Written public comments will still be accepted through today at midnight. Comments may be submitted from the proposed actions page on the district's website or made orally during this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. In accordance with the procedures described in Regulation 1.08, would a representative of Bakelite Synthetic like to make a statement? If so, not present, please raise your hand via video teleconference by clicking on the raised hand button next to your name on the participants list and you will be called upon or by pressing star three, joining by phone. If you're present, please step to the podium. Tell us your name and title when you begin speaking. Do we have some?
Good morning, everyone. My name is John Morris. I'm the site environmental lead for Bakelite Synthetics on the Camp Brown Road location. On behalf of our entire team, we want to sincerely thank you for your time, your questions, and your continued partnership. We deeply value our role as a neighbor and community member, and we remain fully committed to operating responsibly, transparently, and safely. Our permit renewal is not just a regulatory milestone. It reaffirms our promise to protect the health of our neighbors, the environment we share, and the future we're building together. We look forward to continuing our collaboration with local leaders, residents, and agencies to ensure operations reflect our high standards of safety and stewardship. And thank you again for your engagement and hope everyone has a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Regulation 1.08 provides the opportunity for any person who wishes to make a statement. Does anyone from the public wish to make a statement today? If present online, please raise your hand via video teleconference by clicking on the raise hand button next to your name or on a participants list or by pressing star three. If joined by phone, you will be called upon. Please tell us your name and organization that you may be representing, if any, when you begin to speak. I think we'll start with folks in attendance who have filled out a comment request card.
First is Skylar Woodin from React.
I think that was for the regular comment.
Okay, that's regular.
Then Byron Gary from KRC.
Thank you. Good morning. I'd like to thank the district and the board for hosting this hearing this morning. I wanted to start off by apologizing for my appearance. It's a little hot outside, and I rode my bike in, so I'm not in the same shape I was when I was doing that twice a week to work here. First, I wanted to state that everything that I'm stating right now will be submitted in a written comment in more detail later this afternoon. So don't worry too much about taking detailed notes or anything. I just wanted to highlight a few points at a really high level. First, I wanted to make clear for the record Bakelite resides in a fenceline community at the southern end of Rubber Town, directly upwind of the largest population of people of color in Louisville and the largest black population in Louisville, as well as the lowest income population center in the area. Since the agreed board order that was mentioned earlier in 2019, I think the board order was 2021. Since that time, I'd also like to point out that Bakelite actually accounts for more than 25% of the excess emission event reports to the district, according to the district's dashboard. So it seems that problems still remain, and I'd also like to point out that it appears that APCD has removed references to environmental justice from a stated basis, assuming this is in light of recent developments at the national level, but that's a very disappointing trend to see from our local authority that does retain the ability to be more stringent than the federal government. Following up on the fact that the facility resides in an environmental justice community, I would also like to encourage the district to continue to follow the environmental justice and permitting principles that were laid out by EPA in 2022 that have seemed to have since been removed from the web. Again, it's part of the national trend that we're seeing, unfortunately, but I would like to encourage the district to continue to strengthen transparency and engagements and permitting in environmental justice areas in particular. A few simple steps are laid out in our comments that we'll be submitting later this afternoon. Just a couple of really quick ones. The construction permits that Mr. Barnett mentioned earlier don't seem to be posted anywhere on the web right now, so it's really kind of hard to even compile what all of the requirements that are currently applicable are. And I appreciate Mr. Barnett laying out a number of changes that are being made. It sounds like some of them are strengthening from the previous permits, but in order to see what those changes are right now, you would have to actually do a side-by-side comparison of this 100-plus-page document to the previous version of it. It would be very helpful if changes that are being made could be laid out step by step so that the public can see exactly what is changing in this permit from the last one. Third, I recognize that the Title V program generally is not in existence to create new standards. It is to compile all of the standards applicable to a source. One of the main functions, however, is to ensure that each of those standards is matched with adequate monitoring, record keeping, and reporting. Again, this is a 100-plus-page document covering 90 emission units and, by my count, almost 300 pieces of individual permitted equipment. Across all of those different pieces of equipment, it is incredibly difficult, if not impossible, as a layperson to make sure that the standards match the monitoring and record keeping and that there is adequate monitoring to make those standards practically enforceable. So I'd encourage the district to do that work for us and make sure that that is laid out somewhere publicly so that we can see when there is a mismatch. We point out a couple in our comments that appear to be mismatches where there is a standard without matched monitoring, but it's impossible to do that across all those 300 different pieces of equipment. Finally, I'd just like to say, as members of board and the district are probably aware, Bakelite was a subject of a recent story. It was given an exemption by the president to the updates to the hazardous organic nicheap that Mr. Barnett mentioned earlier. Those standards were strengthened in 2024, including to eliminate an exemption for excess emissions during startup, shutdown, and malfunction events. It appears that if the district were to follow that exemption, it may be in conflict with the district's own regulations. I'd just like to encourage the district to make it absolutely clear that the standards applicable to this facility apply at all times, including during the startup shutdown and malfunction events. Finally, I'd just like to thank the district for extending the comment period and providing this opportunity for public hearing. I look forward to seeing the final results of this as well as response comments. And again, you can look forward to written comments from KRC and Reacts later this afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ebony Neil Harper from React.
So as Byron stated, React is submitting a comment on this permit with KRC. But I did want to just highlight that in part, React is calling for closer monitoring of Bakelite and a requirement that Bakelite provides demonstration that their control of emissions actually works in the most protective ways possible. Justification for this is evidenced by the numerous incidents they've had over the years in the 83 excess emission events that they've had since 2021. Also, I want to debate the, any company that emits chemicals that have the potential to harm must be required to help prevent that harm. And so the Bakelite representative who came up today said that he appreciated the continued partnership. I guess he meant with the district and the community wants that partnership as well. And when I say that, I mean that the community has a level of expertise that nobody in this room has. Nobody has in this room, except for the people who are directly impacted by the chemicals that are coming, not only from Bakelite, but the several other entities that they are being exposed to. And so without the partnership, without bringing the community in as part of this partnership, it's very disingenuous to even act as though you all are trying to reduce harm because the people who are being harmed, their voices are muted, and the messaging from people who are supposed to be protecting us is negative against the community, and it's unacceptable. Secondly, the Bakelite representative said, I'm not going to quote, because I think this is what I heard him say, that they want to act responsibly, transparently, and safely. And so I believe that one of the ways Bakelite can achieve these goals is for the district to in part require demonstration of what they say they're going to do. So when they have all these incidents and excess emissions, they need to demonstrate. Wasn't it actual excess emission? If they say that it wasn't an excessive emission, then the district needs to follow up to see. You can't just keep taking self-reported information from industry in thinking that is the most protective way to be for community. And so, yeah, I think that's all I'm going to say because I really didn't prepare a statement, but didn't feel like I should just sit there and not let these people in this audience know that Bakelite has had 83 excess emissions since 2021. Excess emissions translates to chemicals coming out that probably are not supposed to be coming out that could be affecting other people. And these people are human beings that have families and want to have a good quality of life, and they cannot do that without your partnership. And what your partnership means is that you have to do some self-analysis, not you, your company, and think about how you can help either by using safer alternatives as far as chemicals, by using the best technology that you can, everything that you do, every day you go into that office should be a day when you're thinking about how can I help reduce harm to these people who live in this community. And so I want to say that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
There was a fly.
Do we have others present on the floor? Are there any folks on the video teleconference that have raised their hand or by phone?
I don't see any of those two.
All right. As provided in Regulation 1.08, the affected entity has the opportunity to respond to statements. Would a representative from Bakelite like to make a statement? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from board members?
I'll start if no one else wants to.
Okay. Hearing none, I thank you for your attendance and comments, and this public hearing is adjourned.
No.
We move on to the regular monthly meeting of the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board.
Chairman.
Meeting via video teleconference. Hold on. Have a roll call.
Hear us.
Present, please say here.
Yes, you can.
Jeffrey Cooper.
Okay.
Present. Candice Rob White.
You can't hear us.
Can't hear us.
Well, we can hear you. You can't hear us.
I guess I need to type that.
Yeah, I think try that.
All right, let's see.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can anybody in the conference room hear me?
No, doesn't look like it.
Because I got questions here.
Right, that's what I was saying. We saw, I was, so I was trying to get him to stop and then figured that out. Yes, absolutely.
I'm typing it now.
Yes.
It said online people can hear you. We can hear you guys in the conference room, but you can't hear us.
Can you hear us now or we can hear you now?
Okay, you can.
I can, okay.
Okay, we did have comments.
Yeah, Charles had questions.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
No surprise that I'm going to have questions. You should know that by now. I've got a couple pretty straightforward ones for any of the two gentlemen at Bakelite who would like to answer it. What is your overarching quality principle for this facility? Are you guys running ISO, HACCP? What are you running?
Mr. Burdell, if I may, on behalf of the folks here, if the representative would like to take your questions, we will present those questions to him, and they can respond in writing if that allows them an opportunity. So I will offer that, but please feel free to.
You want to get up and speak?
Thank you for your question. We're going to take any, we'll get back in a written response. That's what we find on there. So you know, just know that we're going to be transparent of any responses or questions that are asked. We will get back with you in a short time.
Okay, and I've got right now one more. And it was based on the comments from one of the young ladies who made some comments about upset conditions. Are you folks at Bakelite relying on your operators to react in a manual fashion? Or do you have automatic alert and automatic shutdown on some of the most likely causes of upset conditions?
Again, we'll respond originally. We'll respond written.
Okay, thank you.
Is Mr. Burdell's question need to be written right or is verbally fine?
Purple toss is fine. More important than that, be sure to share that with Bakelite so that they can provide a written response.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? And again, I apologize for cutting that short. I think everybody could hear. Okay. If not, we will move on to the regular meeting. So we're back to the roll call. Candice Rob White.
Here.
Marissa Neal.
Here.
Charlie Bell is not with us. Sajad Jamil is not with us. Charlie Burdellon.
Here.
Is with us. Introductions. None this morning, is that correct?
No introductions this morning.
And then a public recognition.
Yes, and also before, it's one we discussed yesterday, I do want to thank Lauren Robbins and Lannery O'Neil for our technology this morning. We're without Andy, so we had to set this meeting on our own. And it's a little touchy up here with our setup. We often find that if I bump into the computer, it will set things off. So try very desperately not to touch things, but I'm grateful for your honesty. For this morning's recognition, I'd like to recognize David Becker. David is an APCD Engineer III. Mr. Becker recently obtained his professional engineering license in environmental engineering. He now joins Aaron Thorne, Matt King, Dr. Ichimlin, and Steve Revan in satisfying the rigorous educational testing and experience requirements necessary for licensure here in Hollywood. Congratulations, David, for me, please.
Again, congratulations. It's a great achievement.
Great.
The minutes of the public hearing and regular meeting held on July 16, 2025 were distributed like triply for review. Are there any questions, comments, changes from board members?
No.
Hearing none, those are approved. We now move to the public comment period. Ms. Robbins, is anybody ready to make a comment?
Yes, Skylar Woodin.
Good morning. My name is Skylar Woodin. I'm here with React. I came to speak on Anderson wood and the effects that it had on my neighborhood. Me and my family have been residents of West Louisville for over six years. And in that time, like throughout my entire life, my mother's entire life, we've seen the pollution coming from Anderson. We've smelled the pollution coming from Anderson. That's just one facility, like directly in eyesight from my front porch, not to mention Reynolds Aluminum a couple miles over. It's a lot in this area, and just to touch on what we mentioned with Bakelite earlier today, it's just an overarching issue. We can keep looking case by case at specific facilities, but the issue is just overarching that industry needs to bring community in when they're having these effects on the environment, on our health, when there are numerous explosions and fires coming from one facility. Imagine if one house in a certain neighborhood who had fires repeatedly for years for under the same resident had explosions repeatedly. The community, the police are going to come together, what's happening in this house? And we give industry so much more leeway than we give the actual residents of our city. So that is my specific case that I can speak to with Anderson and smelling the burning wood in the air, having chips floating through the air and hitting you when you walk through. It's, it's just unlivable. It's a condition that like you couldn't even fathom just as a day-to-day situation. So I'm just here to attach a face when we talk about these communities, about the people it affects. There's like a stigma, but it's just so many regular people care who are part of the community. The people who watch your kids, the people who drive our buses, the people who run this city have the worst end of what it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robbins, other folks who, on the floor? Any written comments provided? Any other members of the public in this room that wish to make a comment this morning? So please step to the podium and give us your name and any organization that you're representing. Thank you. Any members of the public that wish to make a comment on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand. Video teleconference should be called on. This is a picture you can find on our participants list by pressing star three and joining by phone, and you will be called on. Ms. Robbins. Thank you. This completes the public comment portion of the meeting. Moving along, there is no unfinished business, no new business, and no committee reports this morning, which brings us to staff reports and Director Hamilton, your role.
Thank you very much. Thanks to everyone for coming on today. We really appreciate that. Our Engineer One position has been posted, and we are now awaiting candidates from HR for review. I'm very happy to report that our union negotiations were successful. We have a tentative agreement that we've reached with ASME leadership. That is not. That is now being evaluated by Frank and File ASME colleagues for ratification.
When's the vote take place?
I'm not really sure. Uh, we'll provide an update as soon as we have that date and we go to the outcome. With respect to our federal funding, we've spoken at length about our $1 million EPA government-to-government environmental justice grant and its termination. Our name for this grant is the Rubber Town Air Toxics Health Assessment, or RATHA, project. EPA moved to terminate the grant in March of 2025. And then we have been going through an administrative dispute process since then. On Friday, August 8th, EPA made a final determination in our dispute. That is, that they have received our information, reviewed that information, and rejected it. At this point, I'd like to say that there was more to their letter, but it really wasn't. Uh, there is an opportunity to, again, dispute that determination, uh, based on our assessment and with the assistance of the Jefferson County Attorney's Office. We've not yet identified any new basis to continue the administrative dispute process.
And that's a 15-day window?
So we're coming up.
The letter from the, from EPA is online.
It is not online. We have provided copies to the board, uh, and our RATHA partners. That includes, uh, West Jefferson County Community Castles, the University of Louisville Environment Institute, Park to Ball Community Health Centers, and our local Metro Government, Public Health and Wellness. County Attorney, uh, Juan Win will continue tracking ongoing litigation challenging EPA's wholesale termination of these types of grants. And will be advising APCD and Louisville Metro Government as those cases progress and potentially present opportunities for us to join. In the meantime, we have notified our partners, and we're working with our outstanding team at our Office of Management and Budget to close out the grant. Substantial work was able to be done under this grant. A lot of good opportunities have come from it. We've acquired some equipment which we're in the process of standing up. And we've also acquired a second environmental chemist to move them to another funding stream. As we put that equipment into, uh, operation, once we have valid, uh, we need validation, uh, documentation as well as in-field work with it, we'll bring those results to the board.
And no staff positions were eliminated, you're able to.
Correct.
Assume, okay.
Correct. Uh, we're really glad to have that second chemist. You know, in addition to helping continue work here with the equipment we acquired, they're also gonna provide assistance with our, uh, Auto GC, uh, at Algonville Parkway and also at Cannon's Lane. That equipment is looking at air toxics, uh, on a near continual basis and provides a lot of data that has to be Q and Q C. So the extra help is really appreciated. We will always continue to look for ways to work together with our grant partners and others. And that includes supporting the goals of RATHA and other projects. EPA will be providing additional air monitoring, uh, grants in the future. And as we can align those with questions our community has, that's where we'll focus our efforts.
Well, I appreciate that they eliminated quite a bit. Um, and you made a comment about future grants, so any indication about those will be diminished as well, or? Time will tell.
Time will tell. Um, my contacts within EPA working on air toxics, they are full steam ahead. So I'm hopeful, uh, that we'll continue to see their support. They have some new technology that they're deploying, uh, mobile monitoring equipment. And we'll continue to seek out their assistance because they put that equipment into practice. And it seems to me that EPA is focusing on, uh, funding projects that have local impacts. I have my fingers crossed anyway. So I'm always grateful for the board's support for our work. I know that you all, uh, shared your support for the RATHA project. And as we pursued our dispute, keep you up to date as new opportunities arise. Categorical grants, Cleaner Act Section 103 and 105, EPA's administration of those grants with new administration has been delayed. We've now received our full award for our Clean Air Act Section 103. That's our particulate monitoring grant. Uh, we received that award in full. And as of last Monday, we've received an initial partial award for our Section 105 grant. This supports all of our general work. We are meeting with EPA next week on the timing of their final award under that grant for this federal fiscal year, uh, which ends on September 30th. So we're looking for being sure that they're aware that they owe us fairly substantial.
This is money they owe.
Money they owe. It's for work that we've conducted between October of '24 and September 30th of this year. Right. That's good news. I have even better news. On August 13th, EPA notified the District of its concurrence on our exceptional event demonstration for the 2023 Canadian wildfires. With this decision, EPA evaluated six of nine days where we believe ozone was evaluated, was elevated due to the Canadian wildfires. And they now agree that data from those six days should be excluded. As a result, the area now meets the National Ambient Air Quality Standard of 70 parts per billion for 2023. With that, we've shown that the area met the 2015 ozone standard in 2019, 2020, '21, '22, and now '23. EPA's decision in its concurrence letter is considered preliminary because it will only be finalized when they complete a regulatory action related to the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. This could potentially include redesignating the area to attainment. However, there's still work to be done before that will occur. Uh, ozone season here in Louisville ends October 30th, so we are continuing to monitor our current status. And then likely seeking EPA's concurrence on the three deferred days in our exceptional event demonstration.
And then, in the process of that is similar to the six-day ISO or that.
There's a little bit of difference in those last three days, and EPA's decision to defer once they reached attainment is, uh, we'll talk about that for particulate matter here in just a second. They told us this is what they were doing. For them, once they've cleared 2023, they've said, we're not gonna do any more work unless it has regulatory significance. It may have regulatory significance depending on where our area ends this ozone season. So they will have a valid reason to go back and evaluate those dates.
But there's a reason I think those won't be similar to the six-day group.
I would hope so. I, I will tell you, we're the only agency in the southeast, maybe down on the east coast, who has successfully defended a 2023 ozone-related impact from those Canadian wildfires. Kind of uncharted territory, but great job for the team involved. Lauren Robbins, Will Baughman, air monitoring Billy DeWitt, Ryan Ferris, Mina, uh, Dr. Mina, Cecil Maloney. Am I missing anybody? Matt Mudd, that's also on vacation. Sorry about that. Uh, but being first is not always fun. Um, something with transnational wildfire smoke impact, we've learned a lot. So great job to everybody. All right, for particulate matter, US EPA also notified the Indiana Department of Environmental Management that it concurred with its exceptional event demonstration for the Jeffersonville Monitor in Clark County. You may recall that our Metropolitan Statistical Area includes Clark and Floyd County, thus the Indiana, Kentucky, Indiana, Louisville area. The Jeffersonville Monitor had the highest design value within the Metropolitan Statistical Area, so it is what we would be judged with attaining that newly strengthened, uh, nine-microgram-per-cubic-meter standard that was passed in 2024. With EPA's concurrence that elevated readings in 2023 were related to the Canadian wildfires, the entire Metropolitan Statistical Area, Clark, Floyd, Jefferson, Bullitt, Alton Counties, we now meet that newly strengthened nine-microgram-per-cubic-meter standard. In 2024, EPA reduced that standard 25%. So that is great news. When attainment designations become formal in February of next year, our area will be meeting that standard.
And that's for certain, they're gonna change it to lie.
The new administration has indicated that they are going to reconsider, make it air quotes, so let's find mine just a second, I apologize for that, um, that they're gonna reconsider the PM 2.5, uh, National Ambient Air Quality Standard. They contend that the standard, uh, which the Biden administration did reconsider, uh, is improper. And then I don't know how you reconsider or reconsideration. There isn't such a thing under the Clean Air Act, uh, which is the air quote reason. But we'll wait and see what they, you know. The good news is that we've done a tremendous amount of work and planning both our agency, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, and our regions, EPA Region 4 and 5, and that planning has paid off. Any other questions?
Not by me.
Okay. Oh, before we move on, uh, EPA also, same as they did for the ozone concurrence, once they reached nine-micrograms-per-cubic-meter for the Indiana side of the river, they stopped reviewing any other dates. All right, Anderson Wood. We continue to routinely surveil Anderson Wood for fugitive dust and to date have not observed any violations. We also continue preparing our report about baghouse control enhancements, uh, which we'll present at the September board meeting. In the meantime, we've installed a sensor at Moplin Elementary School, which is one street over from Anderson Wood, and which you can now monitor in real time on EPA's fire and smoke map. We're gonna keep our fingers crossed that we can pull that map up so everyone can see how to access it. We'll be sure that, uh, there's a link provided on the board's webpage following.
Well, uh, hold on.
Not here, not in this room, but online. All right, um, now the people online can't see it. Yeah. Care with us, please. We may not let, let Andy go on vacation.
No.
Week. Okay. There we go. All right, so now just go. Okay, so this is US EPA's fire and smoke map. The large circles that you see are our regulatory monitors, uh, both here in Jefferson County and across the river in Clark and Floyd Counties. The smaller green dots that you see are actually sensors. These are small, low-cost devices that have gotten pretty good, actually. In particular, looking at particulate matter. Now, on this map, what you'll see is a collection of both private and some APCD sensors. Look at the map in its entirety. There are also a series of sensors that are over in East Louisville. We review this map on a near daily basis to see that these sensors are, uh, also providing information that tends to generally concur with our regulatory monitors. Uh, US EPA, in accepting the data from the sensor manufacturers, and right now there are actually two different types of, uh, sensor products here, they actually do a correction value to make the sensors, uh, more comparative to the regulatory monitors. So they do some QA QC on that, and then they report those, uh, concentrations. For our area and our sensor, Blanry O'Neil, that is the Moplin Elementary Sensor. It is a clarity node. This is what you can see about that device.
How long has that been there?
Two weeks.
So, a little recent.
Yeah. And this is a, a really great, you know, transparent, uh, opportunity for folks to, to look at air quality within their area. This has a little bit of an archive of information to it. It's pretty short, but it will show you trends, uh, in a couple-of-day pattern. And it tells you air quality according to the air quality index. So when we see the green, it means we're at half the standard. When we see the yellow, it means that we are approaching the standard. We, if you see orange, that means that we are above the standard. And then various color that may, uh, result depending on how high concentrations continue to be. So that is a clarity node. It has the same type of sensor as the purple air, uh, monitor, but it has a little bit of opportunity in that it's, uh, solar. So anything more you'd like to share, Billy? Okay. But thank Tom Love for, uh, and Lee Burke, uh, new crew for working with JCPS in installing, uh, that sensor. Just above that, the smaller dot that you see, that is a sensor at the Alberta Ojones Park. And then the rest are private. Uh, if you'll click on the Alberta Park monitor. The Alberta Parkway Monitor, uh, that is our monitoring station there. You're gonna see some difference just be, between when those, uh, devices are reading, where they cut off from, uh, at the standard to your above 50% of the standard. But they're generally comparable. And we see that comparability across, uh, metro area. For our view of this data, uh, and what we see historically now from the Alberta Ojones sensor is very comparable to our Southwick Air Monitoring Site, uh, which is just a little bit up in Park to Ball. We moved from there three years ago? Ten plus, five years ago, uh, we used to have a air monitoring, uh, we used to have our air monitoring station at Southwood Community Center on the roof, uh, but they needed a new roof, and they were uncomfortable with us bolting things through the new roof, which is why we did. So, anyway, that's there. We'll make sure folks know how to get to that. I do want to let folks, uh, from Air Justice know that we'll share our data. They were kind enough to share their data from, um, a citizen science project that they did, uh, for six months in '24 and '25. And we are planning to meet with, uh, Dr. Megan Poole, formerly with U of L, now of, uh, University of Texas, Austin, Professor Shivani Carthens of UK Law School, React, and their data team on their data, uh, which, as I said, they did share with us, so we can better understand their data interpretation. And we'll update the board on the Moplin sensor data in discussion later. One of the shortfalls of, uh, EPA's fire and smoke map is that it doesn't really archive the sensor data well. And so we're looking to put together a downed board so that that data can be more, uh, readily accessible to folks for a long term. Any questions?
Nope.
We'll probably, not gonna probably, when Matt comes back from vacation next week, we'll be knowing a press release about this. There's a really nice video that will be associated with it of Tom Love, uh, actually installing the sensor. All right. On Monday, August 4th, the District and the Kentucky Division for Air Quality submitted a non-interference demonstration for Jefferson Bullitt and Paul counties to replace emission reductions from RFG with other emission reductions. Given the advancements in conventional gas, which has significantly limited the reduction from RFG and the shutdown of Mill Creek U of One, EPA will now evaluate festival and our current air quality status and make a final determination. I have been asked when EPA will make a final determination. I have no idea. Uh, what, they'll make it when they make it. We were a little surprised at the speed with which they made their concurrence on our ozone demonstration, and given the unique nature of that, again, I think it's because we did a, a good job. But we'll hope to have a decision very soon. Under EPA D regulatory actions, everyone may remember that back in March, the agency came out and said there were 31, uh, regulatory actions, but they're intending to take 27 of those were related to the air program. They've gotten started on those. One of the things that was mentioned. One of the things that was mentioned earlier today is that in an executive order in March, the new administration offered companies an opportunity to obtain an exemption. I'm sorry, an extension, not an exemption, of up to two additional years under Section 112 of the Clean Air Act. It's an extension, not an exemption. We've seen two issues already on this executive order. One earlier this year for certain coal-fired units subject to the 2024 mercury ear toxic rule revisions, none of those are in Jefferson County. And now with certain sources subject to the 2024 hazardous organic nisha for the HON that Mr. Barnett mentioned. This extension may be renewed if appropriate by the President. I want to let folks know, this does not involve the agency. Not sure it involves regional staff at EPA, they do not have information about this, and these decisions come out in public, and we're being notified at the same time as well. For the company here in Louisville, Bakelite, it extends the HON compliance deadline from 2027 to 2029, doesn't extend the requirement to comply. Three other companies that are also subject to the HON revisions did not see exemptions. However, the administration has announced that they will reconsider the 2024 revisions, and so will advise the board when that proposal is published and hope that the public will weigh in on regulatory changes that they propose. Any questions on that? All right, I'm going to ask Ms. Robbins to join me as we begin to talk about the endangerment finding. To get us started on that, I want to let folks know that the Department of Energy has produced a new report titled "Critical Review of Impacts of Greenhouse Gas Emissions on the U.S. Climate." The report asserts the following, that the established projections under the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, or IBCC, are overestimated, and that the concern that there will be a doubling of atmospheric carbon dioxide, in their view, is likely to remain under 2 degrees Celsius. That contemporary climate models display persistent warm bias, they over-project observe warming trends, and therefore offer limited utility for informing policy decisions. The urban heat island effect is inadequately accounted for within national temperature datasets, resulting in an overestimation of underlying climatic trends by as much as 40% in certain regions. Elevated concentrations of atmospheric carbon dioxide confer unequivocal, sorry, unequivocal benefits to plants and farming due to global greening.
Can you repeat that again?
Yeah. Elevated concentrations of atmospheric CO2 confer unequivocal benefits to plants and farming due to global greening as a result of CO2 fertilization. They continue to, in their report asserting that there is no observable increase in weather events due to greenhouse gas emissions. The greenhouse gas emission reduction strategies are unlikely to achieve meaningful climate benefits, but would incur significant economic costs, and projections of accelerated sea level rise show no acceleration. And lastly, estimates of economic impacts are methodology, are uncertain and inflated. We'll just leave it at that. So, collectively, this report asks policymakers to reexamine the rationale for immediate or stringent climate intervention. At a July 29 announcement of US EPA's Endangerment Finding, EPA Administrator Reece Zeldin said that he would be using this report as part of the basis for repealing the endangerment finding. It's an interesting read, I had the pleasure of reading it on the beach.
There's a sea that was rising around.
So. That is where they're starting from. With the proposed repeal of the 2009 Greenhouse Gas Endangerment Finding in repeal of all mobile source greenhouse gas emission regulations, I'm going to ask Ms. Robbins to start us off with, how did we get here before we figure out where they're proposing for us to go next?
Good morning, everyone. Like Director Neveson said, I'm just going to take us back a bit further than 2009. And kind of what kicked all of this off, what brought about the Endangerment Finding in 2009, is this language in the Clean Air Act, this is Section 202A1, I'll read it. It gives the EPA Administrator the authority to prescribe standards applicable to the emission of any air pollutant from any class or classes of new motor vehicles or new motor vehicle engines, which in his judgment cause or contribute to air pollution, which may reasonably be anticipated to endanger public health or welfare. And one of the big questions or big issues at the time was that phrase, "emission of any air polluted," because there were certain groups and state governments at the time that believed that that, all that language included greenhouse gases. So, for years, they were petitioning EPA to interpret Section 202A1 that way, so that they could regulate greenhouse gas emissions from new motor vehicles under that section. So, for years, EPA denied that petition. It eventually was appealed all the way up to the Supreme Court, which led to Massachusetts versus EPA in 2007, where the Supreme Court found that greenhouse gases are air pollutants covered by the Clean Air Act. And in that same decision, the court held that the EPA Administrator must determine whether the emissions of greenhouse gases from new motor vehicles cause or contribute to air pollution that may reasonably be anticipated to endanger public health or welfare, or whether the science is too uncertain to make a reasonable decision. So, that led to the Endangerment Finding, two years later. It is technically two findings, we just collectively call it the Endangerment Finding, but it was the Endangerment Finding as well as the Cause or Contribute Finding. So, EPA Administrator Lisa Jackson at the time found that current and projected concentrations of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere threaten the public health for current and future generations, and also found that those combined emissions from new motor vehicles and new motor vehicle engines contributed to greenhouse gas pollution that threaten the public health and welfare. This is just diving a little bit more into the findings. The administrator found that global concentrations of greenhouse gases constitute the largest anthropogenic driver of climate change, so that's human-caused climate change. And because of the Endangerment Finding in 2009, EPA has since then been able to regulate greenhouse gas emissions from our largest sources, so far as aircraft and fossil-fueled power plants. Their findings were based on a nearly 200-page EPA analysis of the science, and they received more than 380,000 public comments at the time. The findings were challenged in 2012 in Coalition for Responsible Regulation versus EPA, but the U.S. Court of Appeals for the D.C. Circuit upheld the findings, finding that the body of scientific evidence, Marshall Bay EPA, in support of the Endangerment Finding was substantial. So, there are numerous regulations that EPA has come out with since then, since 2009, these are just highlighting a few in, like I said, some big source areas. In 2024, EPA finalized rules to address greenhouse gas emissions and other forms of pollution from fossil-fuel power plants. That same year, they also finalized new clean car standards. And in 2023, EPA finalized a rule intended to sharply reduce methane emissions and other pollutions from the oil and gas industry. So, that's just touching on a couple. And I thought this study that the Environmental Defense Fund did just really emphasizes the benefits and the importance of the Endangerment Finding. So, they estimated that because of the Endangerment Finding and the regulations that resulted, as well as the Biden Administration's Inflation Reduction Act, by 2025, we will produce more than 28 billion metric tons of climate pollution, prevent almost 190,000 premature deaths, avoid nearly 50 million missed school and workdays, and deliver net health and climate benefits between 3.6 and 4.3 trillion dollars. So, that is all I have.
There's not much here. And I want to thank Lauren for finding some health-related benefits and costs to share with folks. Typically, that's what we see from US EPA in a regulatory impact assessment. Now, there is a regulatory impact assessment associated with EPA's proposed action here. It's typically the first thing that I read whenever there is a large-scale proposal, because it helps orient me to what the agency is thinking they're going to achieve when you move to the more regulatory language of the proposal itself. This one is an economic article, primarily related around people's automobile choices, and a dislike, I guess is the best word for electric vehicles, is very different from the usual sort of public health assessment we see from the US EPA. There's one more slide. Oh, no, this is the first. All right, so one thing I wanted to point out here is, again, EPA has announced those 31 regulatory actions, this is a list of some of those. For the Endangerment Finding, you'll note that EPA has also proposed reconsideration of the greenhouse gas emission standards for fossil-fuel-fired electric generating units. We'll talk about potential impact here in just a moment, but also for extending deadlines for oil and gas industry-related actions. There are a couple more actions we think we'll see coming in the future, but right now, the Endangerment Finding is a big one. It's the next slide, please. Best way for Mita to sum this up is that there are three broad themes that EPA asserts as the basis for this proposal, and primarily, it's that Clean Air Act, Section 202, doesn't give EPA the authority to set emission standards addressing a global climate issue. Alternatively, the 2009 Endangerment Finding is based on an unreasonable analysis of scientific evidence in subsequent developments, i.e. the report that I just mentioned from the Department of Energy, cast doubts on that analysis. And lastly, even if the Endangerment Finding stays in place, greenhouse gas emission standards should be repealed on vehicles, because no available vehicle emission control technology can meaningfully address global climate change without potentially causing greater harm to public health and welfare. We'll dig into those for just a second. I want folks to understand, public comment period for this, it ends on September 15. They are currently holding public hearings, they had planned for two days, they've now extended that to four. They start at nine. Today's was starting at 10, and they go until eight. Folks have two and a half minutes to think about. Lanyard and Lauren watched a portion of that yesterday, I caught a few of them, it is daunting to be given two and a half minutes, and folks have done a great job of sharing their concerns so far. Lauren checked this morning to see how many comments have already been filed. Seventy thousand, two hundred, something. Seventy thousand, two hundred plus as of this morning. So, this is important for folks. All right. As Lauren mentioned, one of the bases that EPA is asserting to follow these three broad themes is that cleaner app, Section 202, is referenced to air pollution, not air pollutant, means that EPA's work should be limited to local or regional harms, not global. They also assert that recent Supreme Court decisions, including elimination of the Chevron deference in Lower Bright, and the major question doctrine cases in Utility Air Regulatory Group versus EPA and West Virginia V EPA, now make EPA's implementation of Section 202 problematic. They mention this DOE study. They assert that there's no requisite technology for new motor vehicles and engines that would be responsive to global climate change, because reducing emissions from a car will not have a significant impact on reducing greenhouse gas emissions and concentrations globally. And then this is the one that, really, you see, they're making it out better in the Regulatory Impact Assessment, is that public health and welfare are harmed by vehicle greenhouse gas standards, because they increase the price of vehicles, decrease consumer choice in what vehicles to purchase, and thus slow replacement of older, more GHG-polluting and less safe vehicles. Do encourage folks to read through some of this, again, I'd like to start with the Regulatory Impact Assessment, that last argument is the primary argument made there. Once EPA works through comments, they will make a determination, there will likely be legal action following that, just as we saw, and Ms. Robbins explained to us this morning on the initial finding. That legal action started in 2009, it ended in 2023, so this could take a while. It does raise questions about California's ability to set its own vehicle standards, they can preempt federal standards. They could repeal a whole suite of greenhouse gas-related vehicle rules. In the Regulatory Impact Assessment, EPA does say they are not repealing any vehicle emission standards related to criteria pollutants, which is important for maintaining those National Air Quality Standards, and essentially, it would move EPA's action that they recently proposed on greenhouse gas repeal for the coal and gas-fired plant greenhouse gas standards. So, I'd like to thank Ms. Robbins for her work, as well as our NACA and Metro Force SARM, and others who are helping us to read through what is essentially a large and complex proposal. Are there any questions for Lauren or myself?
Any question from board members? It's a lot.
Good enough. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the air quality reports. Generally, other than fires and fireworks, things seem to be, because of the role for being 2.5 of ozone, is that accurate? Is, okay. Any questions on those reports from the board? Okay. All right. And again, before we adjourn the meeting, I want to make sure folks sign in out front, if they wish to do so, helps us keep a record of laws and independence. I think our next meeting is September 17, 2025, at 10:00 a.m., and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks for everybody showing.